Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're gonna go ahead and pass that along to the auditor.
It's hard to.
There's only one on the list. Uh, so we'll forward those on if it's okay with you guys for. Um, the other thing I kinda wanted to mention about was the delinquent utility accounts. Okay, that's what we discussed earlier. The other thing I kinda wanted to mention uh was a kinda updating on anything that I.
I got, I got.
Uh, as far as rainfall and everything, uh, I will, we'll say that we were pretty, pretty inundated at the, at the wastewater plant. We, it was quite a bit of water that was being treated at, at one time. Uh, however, uh, we did not uh blow any solids over or anything like that. Uh, you know, I don't think there's gonna be any problems as far as what we're discharging to the river. Everything seems to be okay.
How are they gonna know? Because, and they couldn't sample out of the river.
Yeah, well, we have to test.
Oh, before it gets to the river.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, as far as I know, we're okay on everything there. Problem that we did have was in Forest Hills. Uh, one of the list stations, uh, number five, Forest Hills List Station. They have an SSO which is a sanitary sewer overflow. I don't know if it was due to the dike, uh, or the water building up or whatever. I, it could've built up so much that it actually went back into probably none of our manholes. And was, was being brought in, uh, from the manhole or it could, it could've came in from a basement. Uh, there's water flowing through two homes.
Yeah. Right in between of us.
Yeah, and down the road. So whether they got water in their basement and then from that point got into our sewers, I mean, Lord only knows what, what all took place there. But we'll have to report that to the EPA, that sanitary sewer.
It's called an SSO?
SSO, sanitary sewer overflow. And, uh. And, uh, you know, we'll have to look at that in future. We may, you know, have to look at that.
Uh, I'll play RCD sales. The big one, RCD sales.
That's why this is the end of the conversation. Uh, we can also look at where a backup flows. Huh?
I think they airbag somebody.
I should do it both ways. Uh-huh. Maybe the water backed up so far it got into a manhole somewhere.
So where is List Station four?
Where's all this crap?
Or, or, or five?
Or five it was?
Yeah, and that was the one we called five. Or this one now.
Yeah.
If you go down Pine Hill Road here and you go around the bend right here. But if you, you just go back in here.
Uh-huh.
Uh, there's, there's a, uh, list station there.
Okay.
Then there's a little river that kinda runs through, a little creek.
Yep.
Well, there's a manhole right beside the creek.
Is that the one that looked like a water fountain with the water going?
After I talked to you, I, I went over.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, that's.
That's right there, Maple Court, right? No, right at the curve? No, no.
It's Forest Hills Road, it's a curve.
Right, and then it turns into Maple Court.
Yeah, it does turn into Maple as you go on up.
Oh.
Up here.
Okay, okay, right, okay. So you're, okay.
It's, it's this bend right here.
By Baker's.
If, if you go.
Yeah, by Joe Baker.
It's right beside Joe Baker.
Okay, but that Maple Court here is extended down here. That's called Maple Court too.
This is called, this is Maple Court here?
Yep. That's, that's the reason the fire department had to make that sign because they thought it was leaking.
I guess I thought it was Forest.
Forest Hills Road.
Right.
Where they got screwed up when they went on a call, call for a heart problem. Well, this is Baker, Joe Baker's place. Because that is Maple Court till it goes to Forest Hills Road ends right there.
Wow.
So that was problem and that water fountain.
That wa- that water fountain was the problem.
That's where the sewage backup was coming out of.
I mean, we just, I mean, both pumps were running.
Yep.
We were going full bore, but there, there was more water than there was pumped. So we're gonna have to check into that and see if maybe.
This is a dumb question, but uh, this algae that ran, algae they got out of Dillon, that's.
We ran creek.
Well, now the red, who's talking about red algae or?
Red algae.
Yeah, 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 more than likely it's prob- probably is caused by some. The biggest thing is false states, uh, in, in the water, which is the kind of source for sewage and stuff. So yeah, that kinda has a tendency, pH, dissolved oxygen, all contributes to that. Uh, I know out on Buckeye Lake, they have a monitoring system out there. I don't know if they have one at Dillon, but at Buckeye Lake they have, if you, if you go past a certain point, they have a, a, a monitoring system there. It solves oxygen, pH of the water and, uh, different, uh, levels, like nitrate levels and so forth contribute to, you know, contribute to.
It'll set off alarm point?
Well, I don't know what they do. They must be, uh, recording that and monitoring it and that might be why, you know, they're trying to figure out why these algae problems occur. And, uh, one, one big thing in, in Buckeye Lake is because of the depth of the, of the lake.
Or lack thereof?
Lack of.
Lack of depth.
Yeah, those pictures showed us the dry ran out there. I started, boys go and go fishing and I said, no, we're not going.
So John, when do we report this to the EPA or have we already?
Uh, it, I don't know, Jeff should report it. We have to report it within twenty-four hours. Of the occurrence.
The general note, we have already reported it. I don't know if we have, that would be Jeff's job, but I'm sure that if he doesn't, hasn't already, well, first thing in front of my head.
Dylan, you know, get the pipeline to exactly what the rules of intensive oxygen treatment, twenty-four hours. Like the way you understand it, do you know?
Yes, he was, in fact, he was right before I left, he was showing me, I never seen him, he was showing me what all the. He might've been made to do it then.
Now, we had another problem down at that station earlier and the reason was because of the generator that kicked off. We wouldn't have had a problem. That, this problem was not due to any, our bunch of equipment, it was due to, uh, just too much flush. And also what you understand is, is that the flow coming from there had nothing to do with going in one's basement or anything like that. It was downstream what was occurring upstream.
Yeah, yeah.
So no sewage was getting in any of the basement. It was more of a tributary, uh, which had no way of being packed if, if anyone's basement.
So how, okay. Ideally, the sanitary sewer system is completely insulated from any sort of a stormwater runoff, right?
It's supposed to be, but if you have people's basements flushed and they got basement floors, drains tied into our sewer, that's gonna go into our sewer. If it ba- if it builds up so much on that dike and moves clear back somewhere where there's a manhole and it's running in that manhole, even though if there's a lid on it. I mean, there's still two holes on each end of it.
Yeah.
And it can flow in. I mean, you know, it's, you know, we talked about it before, it's an open system. I mean, it's meant to be dumped into. It's not like your drinking water where it's sealed and you can't get contaminated and stuff. So what's going on there? I think we're gonna have to do some investigating. Even though that water level comes up there, we still shouldn't have near a problem. And I think we can solve it by a couple of different bad ways. Being to determine if we have some manholes in the area that need to be, a lot of times we put what we call bird bath in. Where what it does is you can pop the manhole lid off. There was a, there's a seal that goes on top of there, a plastic seal. And it keeps water from running in there at high water levels. I know we've done that, a few of those in there. I'm pretty sure I'm in that, in that area.
It, it'll keep it all out. I mean, it, it does good, good bit.
It helps, it helps.
It helps. I mean, what, once you get so much in there, it'll, it'll start flooding.
It'll, it'll keep bouncing like.
Another thing is you have people that have cleanouts in there. If their yard's flooded, uh, it's a lot of homes have cleanouts so that they, they can clean the sewer. They're lateral and if it's covered with water and they don't have a lid on it, uh, that could be a source.
You know.
Yeah.
My son-in-law is telling me.
Seen several of them.
The state law, you know, when they build something, now, what, we found a new town, almost cleaning, all, all the big difference. Yeah, what if they put the downspouse down, they've gotta do, put it into the sewer. And he said, oh, but you've got some builders that build it, we could fit through that too.
We're not supposed to, that's a.
I know.
I mean, we try to keep track, when we, when we, when we inspect sewers and so forth, we try to keep track of that. I'm not saying that it can't happen. Uh, now, we did do a smoke test in Forest Hills, uh, about three, well, that's probably like oh seven, oh eight. Shortly after.
I think, oh eight.
Oh eight. Uh, and believe it or not, you know, what we did was we forced smoke down into the, now that, that's not all.
Scientific.
Yes, scientific, but it does help. We, you know, I thought there'd be a lot more smoke coming from down spouts and stuff. Get very, though. I mean, we did see, we found one area where there was a couple of cleanouts that didn't have a cap on it. And I think we set letters, it was people that didn't need to prepare for cleanout lab on it, or. But very little. So, yeah, it's stakes right in there that, like, when builders come in for sewer tapers license, it stakes right in our homes. That's one of the questions on the test is you're not allowed to tie your downspouse into the sewer.
So what will, uh, so we report this to the EPA then, what's the next step?
What happens is if, 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 if it comes up reoccurring, like, or we have more problems with this, then they're gonna, they're gonna get back and touch with us, it's like, you know, some directions here. What, what are you gonna do? Well, we'll already start that phase. I mean, we'll go in, we'll check the pumps out, see if we can increase the size of the pumps. That's what I would recommend first. Then we'll also go, we know where the water was, we'll see if there's any kind of, uh, uh, way that it could possibly get in. We'll check those homes around there with the water, the backup. So we have cleanouts and bits on and stuff like that. We'll have to do a little bit of a survey, uh, survey the, see what's, what it's happening.
So. Pumps. Here's, I guess here's what I'm trying to figure out. The pipe that I'm pumping into is only so big. I mean, I could have, you know, Superman pump, I'm pumping into this.
Well, if you remember Brandy, I don't think you probably don't remember Brandy, but some of you have heard of Brandy. That was a problem. That was exactly what we're on the pumps. So we rerouted that whole area to another area which had bigger transmission lines. We haven't had a bit of trouble with that. Although I did hear that we did have a high wet well, we had a wet well over there today. That's the first time we've had any kind of problem. Just a high wet well level alarm. It wasn't a backup anywhere or anything like that, but it was an alarm telling us that the water levels was higher than what we're wanting it to seem. So that's the first I've heard of that since the upgrade.
Well, there's a lot of water coming down.
Yeah, off that hill. Through that guy's backyard there.
All those are gonna be improvements. What, those in oh eight, oh nine?
I, I did that shortly after I became lieutenant director. That was one of the first things I did. So that would've been oh seven, oh eight.
Yeah.
Didn't really have anything last five years until today.
Not that I know of. So this has gotta be close to a record downfall that I know of. I mean, I think, we, we were pushed to the limit at the point.
We're getting some infiltration, but still, it's just mitigating, see if anyone.
Or what, I mean, you know, we handled it, but I, I wouldn't have wanted to go much longer with those floods. Or we could've had some serious problems.
Man, it's starting to rain again.
So much, even an hour and a half. I mean, I've never seen it quite that bad.
Yeah, that was, yeah.
That made me, that made me close to the hundred year limit.
The, uh, going up Blue Jay too. I think water was just flowing down Blue Jay. Yeah, I, I think it was just a river flowing down Blue Jay.
Yeah, I do too.
The debris that was, yeah, the debris that was in the road and, and.
Again, the amount of inches.
And old tires laying around that, like.
Yeah.
Shocking. Yeah, I saw tires and logs.
Yeah.
I mean, good size log. I mean, a couple of logs I saw was like that long, about that big around, so it had to been floating down the, outside of the road.
There was a lot of water moving through there.
And that Forest Hills area, Willow Ridge and whatever, I think, they got it all over.
That pond then behind that guy's house there off Blue Jay, in the corner of Willow Ridge and Blue Jay. That pond back there that's coming down out of Willow Ridge. And that sucker was deep. Well, that would've caught the water coming down off the hill behind Berkshire. Right, right. Yep. Okay, well, just, you shoot me an email in the morning, let me know that we reported that.
Yep. I'll have to check this out for a second to make sure. But the, the reason why I don't know for sure is because Jack's gonna have to be the one that's gonna estimate it. What, they wanna know a lot of specifics about it. So he'll have to estimate exactly how much flow has, has been, has been overflowed. And, uh, the only way we're gonna do it on that is, um, by calculations and by trying to figure out how long it's actually only going. And then we'll have to give that number to the EPA and then, since we've had two occurrences within relatively a short time. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm sure there's a lot of other municipalities out there that have sewer overflows, uh, this year, this summer. But what you gotta watch is that if it continues, then that's when it becomes. So, uh, let's look at the signs, let's look at the pumps, let's look at a few things to see if there's ways that we can correct it. You know, try to correct it first without increasing the size of the pump. To see that there's no way to correct it eventually. Uh, I kinda wanted to run something by you real quick on the water side. Uh, good item number one on water. Uh, any questions on updating the SCADA PLC at the water, at the water plant? Uh, there's been a legislative request with its waiver bidding process and appropriate ninety thousand eight hundred million dollars for the warranty improvement. Letting the mayor of the city of Heat enter into an outback with a gold pickup, through five thousand twelve street. Freeman, Ohio, four three one oh seven, purchase and install a micrologic available. Logic controllers to run the SCADA system at the water. I know, Jeff, you asked me about, uh, backup on, uh, emails. I do have a copy of that email here stating that the one company did not, did not deal. Separated this, and we can add an email here. As we can appreciate, Westman does not have any info on their current MSCAP system. And they still have the advantage on the radio system. I believe you stated all pricing should be done as quick as possible. We want to avoid wasting any of your time and make sure you have information to make the best decision for the city. Given the current circumstances, we think it may be best to stay with Westman on this project. Thank you, PSF and Mayor. And that was our reply back. So we do have, uh, some stuff in writing, stating.
It's good prudent.
Yep.
Check. Okay, we're spending ninety grand, a hundred grand. I rather use money, we just wanna make sure we got a good. Did we check into warranties and stuff?
Uh.
By the way, should we talk about that a little bit?
We talked about warranties. Uh, I did not check into that yet, but I will.
Before you finalize.
Yeah, before we finalize.
We got some extra money and it's nothing but big computers, so you don't have computers.
Yeah.
Break. We're expected to fix post-ordinary.
Yeah. Uh, you know, I, I will tell you this, that the reason we're going with this system is because the parts are much more available. Not in the decay, which is pretty local. Does carry all the spare parts for this, uh, PLC system. So if something does break down, uh, we have to load it and pick it up. And sometimes we can repair it ourselves without falling in love. We can actually. Add a component or something like that, which we've done in the past. Pressure sensors and panels. I wanna talk a little bit about the water plant goals and what the guys try to achieve. And, uh, what we're trying to achieve at the water plant is good maintenance, good operation and proper testing. The maintenance at the water plant and the, uh, distribution is done on a real routine basis. We make sure, that's why you guys, that's why we're doing the plant upgrade right now, is to help make improvements to the water plant. Back to you, thanks to you guys for making these improvements because what it does is it, it produces better quality of water. And we're able to maintain the system much, much better. Good operations and good, good plant personnel, uh, is essential. We have that. And, uh, proper testing, a lot of the testing that's done at the water plant, if it's done in-house, then there's a lot of testing that's done outside the house. Uh, we can't afford the equipment to, to do metal testing, mass spectrometroirs to do auto organic compounds, different things. So a portion of all the testing, both in water and wastewater, have to be subbed out and then they take those results and report those to the. Uh, I wanted to update you on the, uh, the water plant improvements. Uh, and the majority, a lot of the work has been done on the clarifier at this point. I took a few pictures. Uh, there was a couple of things that I didn't like. Uh, this was one of them. There was a, a drip on the side of, uh, one of the, uh, cone of the tank. I made, I didn't fix that. There were some runs that I didn't care for. Uh, now, you have to remember, it still gets another coat after this. This is two coats. Uh, it's already had one, uh, primer coat. This is the first of the two on the finished coat.
And they're putting all pretty thick, it looks like.
Well, they have to. There's a certain mileage that they have to put on. Uh, we've done a retest to make sure that that, that is all finished. Uh, there was some dirt, uh, on the, on there that I didn't care for, so that's been taken off and cleared. But overall, uh, we're doing a pretty good job. I kinda wanted to show you how intricate the inside of the clarifiers is to paint. This is actually a turbine that's inside the clarifier. All that has to be sandblasted, painted, and it involves quite a bit of work. Uh, there's more, uh, things that could've been painted there. Uh, this is an electrical conduit, we're gonna repair that little, little thing there that I didn't like. Uh, this is actually a employee of the, uh, Morris painting that is a subcontractor for the Brothers. That shows, uh, right finish on the right side and then where the, they were actually taking off the old paint, taking it down to the original level. This is a shot up on top. Uh, this is actually behind schedule now or further. Got more painting done on this now.
Uh, this is the ninety-eight clarifier?
This is the ninety-eight clarifier that we're bringing back up to standards. And we're, you know, we're gonna put in a brand new clarifier, very similar to this one. We wanna make sure we do it, that the old ones fall up to the same standards as it. And this is down on the side. I took a picture down the side and showed that, uh, at the bottom, this material here is actually what they sandblast with. It's a slag material, uh, that sucked out and taken away from the site of the water plant. So that was completed. And that's basically the update on the, uh, water plant upgrade.
When's that project supposed to wrap up?
They have until May of next year. So there'll be some stuff going on this summer, a little bit through the winter, and then they'll finish that next year. Uh, water distributions keep them busy. Uh, they're working on hybrid replacing, flushing hydrants of main breaks. Uh, we've actually had two main breaks on James Parkway this month. I don't know why, but we have, it's a newer line. Uh, no, it's been around a long time. It's AC. So, uh, it's best cement. We took it over when we incorporated them. So, uh, what it is, is on one, it was a corroded, uh, saddle, which is a service connection.
We're out on James Parkway, on farther down?
Yeah.
Toward Mid-Ohio?
Yeah. No, it's in Mid-Ohio, the James Parkway in Mid-Ohio.
Okay, not the new one up by the port authority?
No, no, it's the old section where, uh, Inglefield Oil is.
Gummer?
Gummer is in there. That, that's the section that we. And, uh.
We've got something, or, uh, there was some work that was done down for Inglefield and other ways.
Yeah, we've done a lot of work.
Yeah, was that too?
But, uh, this was, uh, you know, this is kinda freaky what I've got in main break. I don't know if it's because of the, you know, the ground's saturated and gets heavy and I don't know if it's. What it is, but we've had two going to James Parkway this. Uh, one of we had to wait. We actually gave a boil alert. Uh, whenever we have anything in that sys- in that area where there's industry or with business or manufacturing. We told them, I think we were all working on it on a Monday. We ended up letting it go till Thursday because we notified them that we were gonna be shutting the water off. So they had plenty of time to prepare for the water shut. Uh, this was a hydrant that was replaced in front of Swifty on State Route seventy-nine. Uh, the guys were working on this. Uh, like I said, they do hydrant maintenance. Quick picture of the new truck. Some of the stuff that's down there inside of it. They had to work very well outside the road there. That shows the new, that's not actually a new one. It's hydrated and rebuilt and put in. The ladder and everything down here is all brand new. Type one of two iron, it's all brand new.
Well, the water distribution guys in Forest Hills, uh, Tom Forman, uh, said, you know, they were like having some, some water pressure. I don't know, maybe they were exercising valves.
They were exercising valves. They were, uh, checking on hydrants, making sure that they were greased and so forth. So probably during some of that hydrant valve, s- you know, tightening and closing.
Yeah.
For prime noticing some fluctuation and.
Yeah. Pressure?
Pressure, so. So you probably, I, I know that I got a couple of flaws in that. About hazard for water. Our clarifiers look nice right now. And now our clarifiers are.
Very easy.
Pretty recent picture. So, uh, you know, a lot of foam and powder in there that we have trouble with. I see if you, you know, salt, you know, we're hard on. Some of the goals that we're trying to achieve in that, uh, wastewater plant is good plant maintenance, good flexion system maintenance, a good laboratory results of plant operation. One of the effective plant maintenance is to keep things up, keep the things greased. The guys do a really good job on it. Uh, I know Nick's there working on the press. Uh, there was a, uh, some hydraulic, I think it was a pneumatic or.
Pneumatic.
Pneumatic cylinder that needed to, uh, be replaced. So they're trying to get together some parts and stuff last, they're gonna press. Uh, guys, I think do a good job on maintenance, uh, good flexion syst- system maintenance. That's one thing that we're always trying to improve on. Uh, you know, I, I guess the thing of it is, is we always have to show that we do maintenance on, on the flexion system. It's the only thing that we have to back if something, if there's a plug that affects someone in their home. Doug Hughes does an excellent job on, on all of that. Uh, we have a log that's, we'll log in every day on what we've done in the flexion system. And, uh, we're keeping up with that. Uh, Jack Brown does a good job on making sure that, uh, the guys use certain sections.
It's too much repeated.
And then the final thing is the good, good laboratory results and good operation. You know, again, I wanna say we're gonna do all the testing from the lab, but we do a lot of, some of the testing goes out. And we are compliant with the EPA on, on all the testing and so forth. Uh, kinda wanted to show you a RAS pump that we have a little bit of trouble with this, this month. Uh, we got to pull it apart. Uh, and there was a rubber seal that was inside the RAS. I think we replaced that part, didn't we?
Yes.
And then we had, then we put a new pump in that replaced it.
And that, that happened.
Yeah, that's happened. Uh, we're pouring the concrete slab, the generator at Woodlands. I think what's kinda remarkable about this is that we did it all by hand. We formed it up by hand. Uh, we went down to Lowe's and bought a quick creek. Uh, we had a mixer here. Uh, we had a mixer here.
We had a mixer?
It's still there. Well, I didn't still have it.
Oh, okay.
But we did have a mixer.
Oh, okay.
Uh, at the location. Uh, the guys loaded.
Did we rent that from someplace or?
The street department.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we borrowed it from a street department. Uh, and the guys were here and as you can see, I think we took about five, thirty bags.
Bumble.
Bumble. Uh,
Did Bob charge you anything for that?
It was a rental fee. And, yeah. That is, I don't even, there was business, it's been a distribution building for over a year.
Don't include that question in your report. It might get in my head.
We had, huh?
I thought, huh?
Yeah, I remember you already took money from me on the street.
That's Shane Ferbey, Jack Brown, superintendent chief, and senior help worker, uh,
Steven, I think that's Steven, isn't it?
No, it's, uh,
Cole?
Cole.
Is he wearing a hat?
Well, I had, uh, that's the guys dumping it in. Uh, that's us pouring it in to the slab, um, adding water. We had both the computer mixer and mixing it by hand. And there's Nick and Shane leveling it off. You can see we're doing a good job leveling it off.
So you guys have strict requirements if you were making him wear a hat.
And then the slab, when it was done, uh, we allowed that some help to put their initials in it. And then they didn't realize that we were going to set the generator on top of it. So you'd never see the initials anyway.
Now someday, someday somebody will see it again.
So then they kinda got depressed because they thought that was gonna be there forever and they won't see it.
Here are another thing is like that. You get better concrete when you mix your own than you do when you buy. You buy a lot of water and you pour enough of that stuff out new.
So Jeff, I want you to take note of this. We, uh, had thirty bags of quick pre, a hundred fifteen dollars fifty cents. Pouring concrete from supplier, three yard minimum, a hundred and eight dollars per yard. So we had savings about two hundred and ten dollars and seventy-five cents when we fixed it over.
You're starting to figure this out. All right.
Also wanted to talk about, uh, uh, the BFD that I talked about earlier. Uh, BFD is in place in the SCUM station. And, uh, we are, we still have to get it synchronized, uh, but, uh, what that's gonna do is allow us to, to run the, uh, pump at different speeds.
Is that on the right?
This is actually the guy from the BFD group.
Oh.
And that stands, so if they're running this thing, because he doesn't understand what this guy's gonna say. Jack Brown's got kind of a, uh, different look on his face there too, so.
He's concentrated.
He's concentrated, so don't talk about that. Uh, we're cleaning the clarifiers at the, at the wastewater plant. That was a task that we completed, uh,
That Carl?
That's Carl. Uh, she watered down into the clarifier. Uh, that's Colton, uh, also doing the same thing. We're trying to get all the alty off of it. Then we clean everything up real good, go down inside of it, inspect it. This is a once-a-year thing that we did. Uh, and yeah, the guys, we have the guys wearing harnesses when they're in critical positions. Uh, these are brushes that we put on. Uh, but if the guys are in a critical position, uh, they're tied off on, from the harness so that we don't lose them down inside. Uh, they're actually, he's holding on to the rope, but then behind him, he's actually tied on some saw. So if he did fall or whatever like that, he would, he would, he would, make sure he doesn't get hurt. Uh, harness goes up, up around here, down around their legs, in between their legs. So they're not gonna slip out of it. Uh, that's Carl. What you gotta realize is it looks like he's on a flat surface there. He's not on a flat surface. That's about twenty-foot drop from where he's standing here to right there.
Well, that does look like a flat surface, doesn't it?
Yeah, it looks like he's standing on a flat surface and doing that, that's, but.
Logical illusion there.
Um, uh, right there is what he could have fallen into.
Ah, wow, there.
And that kinda shows a little better picture of it too. We also cleaned the thickener this, uh, this month. And the thickener is something that thickens before we get to the press process. Uh, we got down inside, uh, and checked everything out. Uh, when you guys worked hard on that, should now accomplish. I think what we're gonna have to eventually address is, yeah, I wanted to show you on this clarifier here too, that these are, these are metal. Uh, over a period of time, metal needs a good painting. And I think maybe next year, that's gonna be another project, is to get busy on painting the metal on the inside of the clarifiers and thickness. What's really crucial about this, and we only do that certain times of the year, because we have so much flow, but we use both clarifiers a lot. So this is gonna have to be done like July, August when it flows. Hopefully next year is like this year. But normally at this time of year, we can take the clarifier down with no problem at all. We can paint, do what we need to do, put it back in service, and take it pretty good. This is very unusual July and very unusual August for us, if they ever seem to quite like this. So I think that's gonna be one of the improvements that we're gonna shoot for next year. As you can see, you're starting to see some primer being shown here. Up on the steel, uh, burner here, you'll see some of the, uh, the painting getting more.
Oh, neat.
So it's, it's good. So that's gonna be our next big project. And if you can see it there too, you'll see the primer starting to show through. Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm waiting myself. I think this is actually the particular.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's the thickener and again, we're showing the primer coming through. And that's what the bottom of the thickener looks like. I think it's been a couple of years since you guys have actually dropped that to what you had it.
That's the first time I've ever seen it.
So, uh, it's not usually they drop that, but they have that for it.
It's a little, a little bit different than the clarifier during, it has more, and.
A little thick.
Yeah. That,
It's not down that high.
When it's, well, when it's down, that affects the waste. So we can't leave that.
What's the longest stretch of time you think you can leave that down?
Uh, I don't know. I mean, we could set up a little better. If we know it's gonna be down, we could set up a little better. We could go back, uh, to wasting directly into the, you know, the digester. And then you can't move off of sending it back to the aerobic to thicken it that way. We, we go back to that.
You get a couple of weeks?
Old way. Uh, probably, we just need to plan ahead to make sure.
They're probably taking about a week.
All the blowers and our thing and the aerobics running and all the valves are freed up and open and flowing and. We can't get.
What's nice about this is I think I could probably use the specs from the water clarifier.
Right.
Use those specs to bid this project. And other than changing the paint, maybe have to, you know, as far as processing. Maybe we'll bid this one on hit in the end of the year or so, which we'll see. So that's one of the things we'll be looking at. Uh, wanted to show you, this, the screen looks nothing like this now. But, uh, I wanted to show you the effluent coming out of, out of the plant. And that's not a real good picture, but, uh, this is the river going out through. This is where effluent coming out of the plant and into the river. Sciota Lift Station. Uh, wanted to talk a little bit about this. Took a few pictures. Uh, Nick is the inspector on this job. Sciota is completed. It is now a gravity system. Uh, the electrical has been taken out. Uh, everything is done on it. Nick has done an excellent job keeping me informed and keeping those guys on the level. I've added, these are both one of the man's holding the holes that were set in, uh, to replace the lift station. Uh, this is the guys who walk beside the road here, uh, where this is actually the opposite side of the road that we were, uh, going to and we, um, drove, or jack and board, you call it jack and board on this specific.
Yeah, that's actually where they rerouted the storm.
Oh, this is here?
Yeah.
Okay, this is where they rerouted the storm. And Nick knows more about this than I probably do, so I, you can object any time you want. Uh, there's the mayor out there. Get the neck instructions.
Do you want cream or donuts?
Yeah, you want cream or donuts? So Nick, do you want donuts or ice cream?
And I said, good.
Oh, boy. Uh, this is Doug Hughes. During the process, we had to actually pump periodically out the lift station while we were down at certain points. And then that was transferred back to the wastewater plant where it was treated. So we actually had the lift station down for, for different times. Uh, Nick, you may wanna chime in on this. I think this is on the Sciota side, I believe. And this is preparing for the bore probably, isn't it? Or is it after the bore?
Right.
No, it's, the bore's done.
Yeah, I think this is after the bore.
Now, those are walls that you put in?
Bore?
No, no, those, those.
Safety cage.
Safety cage, so that these guys can work down inside the bore. Uh, here's kind of a good idea. Uh, the bore started here and went across the street to here, correct Nick?
Yes. Hundred forty feet.
And they got the right pitch and everything, so it's great. This is actually the process of that bore. What they do is they take this, a piece of equipment, they sleeve, they, uh, they run a sleeve across, correct Nick? And inside that sleeve is the actual sanitary sewer. And then as they're boring that, uh, they bring the dirt back and then it's bucketed out. I don't know, I got, I probably have a picture of that.
Oh, okay.
This on the side here, it's, it's bucking it out like that, uh, as they're pouring across.
What company's doing that?
I have to get the name of this, we get, they hired two different companies. I can't think of the name of this company now. It's out of Norwalk.
Okay.
Because this is actually what they call bore and jack. And then the other company that's gonna do, the other part for Fox Run is precise for.
Now, which, which one did the one, uh, did the boring on, uh, Lynn Billworth when we worked there from the end?
That was precise.
Okay.
Yeah, the augers actually, when you see that, that round metal tube, the auger's actually inside that. And they, as they go through that, that metal pipe stays in the ground. And then they put the waste pipe inside that.
Correct Nick? Guys were good.
What's the diameter of that?
Uh, the pipe inside is eight inches. Uh, this is fourteen.
See that? What's the wire going?
We had a manhole on the other side too, Nick, or just both of them?
No, there's a manhole on each side. This, this was the manhole after they bore. This was manhole on the side of the side. And that, that little pipe is a two-inch pipe. That's where the weight, the pump station is pumped them into until they dig from there back to the pump station.
From this back to the lift station. This is actually, we are using the pumps to pump to here, so it'll gravity across the road.
Okay.
Until we go from here into the, the lift station. Was that the existing sewer line there?
Yeah, existing, yeah.
Is that what you tied into or is that what?
Yeah, that was, that was the clay pipe going into the lift station. At this point, they have the lift station four out. They use what they call a snap, or they put around that pipe to snap it, get a nice.
Chain, chain snap.
Yep. So then they'll use a rubber, uh, furry coat to seal.
To seal it.
To still connect that to the last with the other one.
Looks like a destruction area there, but actually it's a lot better than that now. I know they'd like to get in there and get some things cleaned. That's a whole other, there's no way, but there's a way to where they go. Okay, we talked about the pump repair, the, uh, generator pad that's completed, the BFD installation at the SCUM lift station, maintenance of plant, uh, Sciota lift station, so we're now on Fox Run. This is our next task. This is, uh, Mrs. Golf. Uh, we had to dig down beside the lift station itself so that we can attach into it to get rid of Fox Run.
That holds twenty-four thirteen. Twenty-four, twenty-four.
Right there it is. The casing you see around here is what will protect the guys.
Your cage.
That's your cage. When they bore, they'll direct, what they call directional boring. Uh, they'll bore it into this, and then they'll tap into the, uh, lift station. Then I also wanted, which is Mrs. Golf's ceiling specifically.
Uh, what's the reason for that, John?
Here?
Your picture, yeah.
Um, Mrs. Golf called me and said that she heard a loud boom and I don't know if she was laying in bed and then looked up, but there was, she says it's all cracking or something. So we immediately, I got the engineer, I got the person from Terra Valley, I got, um, Nick and myself, and we all went over to look at the crack in the ceiling. And, uh, you know, I'm not gonna lie, uh, if you can, if you look back here, I mean, that's how close they are working to her house. Uh, they do push these metal things down inside. Uh, but they're about, she's, they're about forty-six, forty-seven feet from her foundation. Um, according to the contractor, he came, he's never ran into where they've actually moved the house enough to crack some on ceiling. I think the main point is that I have to mention here is that we aren't responsible. The city's not responsible. Uh, this is up to Terra Valley and it's up to Mrs. Golf to pursue Terra Valley if there's a problem. Uh, I have not come back to Mrs. Golf yet. I haven't mentioned anything to her. Uh, but, uh, just wanted, wanted on record that there was a problem there. You can, you can see it there better than on the other picture. But how long it has been there?
Yeah.
If it's always been there.
Did it look like a fresh crack or?
And what's your, you were there?
Oh, then make me tweet.
He's on camera. You know what? It's, it's probably best for us not to comment.
Yeah, right.
We're not responsible for it.
We're not responsible one way or another, so, I mean, she's gonna have to pursue. Now, what was kind of unusual about this, it was in the furthest back part of the house, which was the furthest part away from where they were working. So, um, and this house has been added on to several times too. Um, I don't know, I think maybe a couple of times. But the garage, I, and I think he used to run a, run a business out of there at one time, like a motorcycle rental today. Cause I walked into one portion of the house and that was, and then I walked into her apartment and that, that part of the house. But I just walked, but I walked around the house, looked at the foundation and then it didn't real good. I didn't see any crack in the foundation or any kind of boom or, or anything like that, so. But again, I wanna stress that it's really not our responsibility. Uh, the contractor carries insurance for things like this, so Mrs. Golf's gonna have to.
Pris, yeah.
We also wanna mention, you know, the guys that work hard every day, uh, for the water in this one. I want them to be recognized. Success, we can tell this meeting good and bad. Uh, if you don't have any employees, then you're not gonna have good outcomes. And I truly believe that we have some of the best employees in the entire business.
Now, that list of names, do that everybody that works knows their departments or if there's something missing?
No, that's everybody. That's everybody.
I'll see your name up there. Nick, I see you hit last.
Gotta be somewhere.
Let me say that they are not ranked in any order. I should have put that in.
Not alphabetical either.
Yeah.
Maybe alphabetically.
But, no, I do wanna mention Steve Lob, John Appleman, Mike, Bob, Austin.
That's the police, Nick Robb.
Amanda Ray, Sean Reynolds, Bill Gordon, uh, wastewater, Jack Brown, Dan Stoffield, and Gao. Doug Hughes, Shane Ferbey, Carl Bozhard, and Nick Morris.
I bet Russell did a minute handle it.
Yes, you did. She bought that bruised roof.
He's big, huh?
I'm standing there looking at it.
Who's it?
Who's it?
I'm from the water department.
Eight twelve or something like that.
Little family, good son.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, Tim, he kinda looked like a little Tim really, actually.
Grandpa, huh?
Yeah, he looks a lot like Grandpa. So, um, other than that, I don't have anything else to mention unless someone asks questions for me or.
If I may, I, once again, I'd like to say how much I appreciate having the opportunity to, to be an inspector in that job. Really appreciate it. I think I'm learning a lot.
What's nice about Nick being on the job all the time, and I don't, don't think we've always done this on jobs. And that's when things get out of hand, is it. But Nick will know everything about this. He's got the in-law. And he can tell the guys, even the younger guys, uh, what's taking place out there, what's there, where is that? Cause really, I'll, I'll be quite honest with you, that whole section out there, I was put in by O D O. And I don't know what went wrong with it, but we don't have ASBILs on it. We don't have anything.
We actually spent the whole first day just locating.
Right.
And we're trying to find.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's the kind of stuff that we don't want to happen. I don't know when that was put in, probably ten years ago, maybe, or something. And, and it just, we just didn't.
There's some surprising records.
Well, the guy who was the inspector for O D O quit halfway through the job. And we, and you can ask John Roth about this. Somehow we never got out of it. I've asked for him several times. I've approached O D O about it. We don't have any records, so when we go out there.
Do we need to file a public information request? That would be.
John Roth might have already done that. I don't know. We have to approach John Roth.
And if you want him, that's the way I know. And then if they can't produce them, they're not the fault. They can't produce them.
I think they've done. I think they've told us.
Really?
I don't know. I may be wrong, but let's check, uh, let me check with John Roth on it. I'll give you a message through you guys.
And that's another nice thing about having inspectors is, is we, we got the plans the way it's supposed to be built, but we've already made some changes. So when they give us the ASBIL plans, I'll be able to make sure they're correct, that they really work.
Uh, even like our last job that we did on Franklin Avenue with the, with the pump station and the new line on Franklin, John reviewed all those afterwards because he was kind of the inspector on that, John too on them. And he's, he reviewed that and that, sort of, as well as the ASBILs and stuff. It's, it's just good practice. Yeah, I appreciate Nick too, uh, getting, making sure that everybody's, you're doing a good job. Other than that, that's all I have. Questions?
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 Six twenty-three.
Do you have to tell Joe about this lift station? Uh, Joe.